Okay, good morning. We'll start this morning's meeting for January the 17th. First thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
Move for approval.
There's an addition.
Okay, we have an addition for the agenda. I think you've got a copy of that on your desk. Renate your legislation to impact waste management.
Yes.
Okay.
Move for approval with the addition.
Okay. We've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I want it right before the substance use crisis facility possibly. Get it in there. Any citizens to be heard that are not on the agenda? Have any, Steve?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Did you say you did or you didn't?
Did not.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, with approval of the bills and vouchers.
Move for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we've got some minutes to be approved from, let's see what date that is. Would have to be approved from back May 10th of last year. There was a change that was made on them.
I think that was done on consent, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon?
That was done on consent, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, that's approved January 5th once then.
Move for approval of the January 3rd minutes.
A second.
Motion by Commissioner Abinga, second by Commissioner Krabinoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, that will go on to request to fill vacated detox LPM position. Kathy McKay and Troy.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Do you want me to make the request or... Okay.
Either one want to speak today?
Neither one of us want to speak. Just kidding. This is a request to fill an LPM position for our detox. We have a vacated position, so we need to fill it to ensure we have coverage especially for the night shifts and the weekend shifts. So, we're just requesting to fill the vacated position and, of course, it's already a budgeted
Any questions on that?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
We've got a motion by Jenny, second by Kevin. All in favor? Or is any discussion, sorry? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else you want. Want to add a couple more?
Dangerous question.
Oh, boy. Well, you weren't getting up, so I thought that... Excuse me. Next thing on the agenda is the amended resource recovery center agreement. Joe Corry?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We just have a couple amendments to our service agreement with the city that we'd like you to consider this morning. The first one is under 7-2, and it's just to add some wording that says each party shall be responsible for damages to or loss of its own equipment. Each party waives the right to sue the other party for any damages to or loss of its equipment, even if the damage or losses were caused wholly or partially by the neglect of the other party. And the second one we're looking to amend is the date the contract would take place, and that would be February 6th rather than January 1st. We just didn't know what the actual date was. Any questions on those or...
Just a history too on this. We had already, obviously, approved this once, and I think after we did that, the city board had sent this contract down to their risk assessment attorney, and he had suggested to add this. And I think we had also ran it by our attorneys, and this is fairly simple language, and then we adjusted our date, so.
Is there a problem with laws of tools or that we had to add?
No, I think it's just...
It's more for equipment, I believe. The city owns some of the equipment, and we own some of the equipment, so if something were to happen, they're not going to sue each other.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the recommended change.
A second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Krabinoff. All in favor? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Post. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll bring Commissioner Campbell's. You want to take all that energy legislation?
Everybody's hearing that other deal, aren't they, Steve?
Everybody is here. For item number four, whatever your board...
Oh, they made it here. Didn't see them walk in. Sorry. We'll take item number four, substantive use crisis facility, design development progress update, including estimate. Okay. Got Scott Fedek and Dan Feist and...
Mr. Chair, I believe we also have Steve Gertz on the teams.
Okay.
Yep, that's correct. Can you hear me?
Yes, we got you. Okay. You going to take it, Scott?
Sure, I can take it. So, yeah, we've got Ryan with Klein-McCarthy and Dan with Gertz. Steve Gertz is on the phone. So, while Ryan is setting up, just to kind of give you a little bit of a recap of where we are, we've completed the two of three phases of design, so we've completed the design development phase. That's what the estimate is that you're going to see today and go through that. From there, we still have, we're been working into construction documents, and those will be ready to issue the end of February. So, those will get sent out for bid the end of February and bid in March. So, that's just really the overall schedule that we've got. So, I think with that, if we're ready to touch on the estimate, we can have Gertz go through the details of that.
Morning. Yeah, the estimate you have in front of you is the estimate based off the drawings that were pulled together for the design development?
Put the mic a little bit closer to you. Okay, thanks.
Is that better? Okay. We had a little bit of an uptick in the mechanical electrical sections, just with the B3 items now included in those scopes. We got a little more detailed estimate on those from some different resources that we reached out to. So, I think, believe that's the biggest uptick that we had on the construction side. And if you look at the B3 area section of that front page estimate, that amount, the B3 section amounts to about $851,000 within the estimate that was provided.
Is that an additional, you say?
No, it's included, so if you look down the right-hand side column, the $851,000 is within that. We just wanted to pull that out and show you what dollar amount is within the estimate for B3 items. And after some discussions with the group, we analyzed all the, made sure all the soft costs, FF and E type things, land costs are all included within everything, so this is 100% complete estimate.
What type of heating is there going to be involved there?
The heating system is...
Or the geothermal wells?
Geothermal wells. We did the testing of those. All that information's been sent back to the design team. There are a couple of alternates that were, we have listed there. Those are also included in the estimate bid or a base estimate because they weren't really pulled out at that time when we got the drawing, so we've lumped them all into the, everything's included. The alternates, we always wanted to show what those would be worth if you decided not to do those.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, Ryan, maybe could you clarify a little bit on the variance process that we're going through on a few of the items here with B3?
Sure. So, in the B3 process, there are a couple of things that we know that the current design, the design just simply, they're either really high-cost items or they're items that we don't think that line up with B3 very well. There's three variances that we're certain, that we're currently seeking. The first one is the solar energy. We believe that based on our discussions with the city that their energy is already solar and wind-powered, so it should be sustainable already. So, therefore, we don't think that we'll need to add any solar aspects to the project because we think we can meet that through the city power. So, that's one variance that we're seeking is just that, not to provide it ourself, but to rely on the city energy for that. The second variance that we're seeking is for the retention pond. With the existing retention pond that's already there for the transfer station, that was designed to already drain this site, and so we're seeking a variance so that we don't have to require another retention pond on the site. So, that would be typically, B3 would require that you have 85% or so of the water retained on your site, but because of that pond already being designed for it, we're seeking a variance against that one. And the last variance that we're seeking right now is for an interior one, which is views and, I would say, yeah, natural daylight. So, right now, because of the way that the state requirements for bedrooms to be on the exterior of this program, that doesn't really allow us to bring enough daylight into the building because all the bedrooms get all the daylight, and that's a requirement from the state for the behavioral health program. So, we just don't simply think that we'll be able to meet that requirement without significant design changes, so we're not seeking that one. And that kind of coincides with the views, which is another portion of the B3 where you have views to the exterior, and we're seeking that we can possibly get a variance for that one as well. Maybe we can bring in some interior features that can cover that instead of exterior views, but those are the three that we're currently seeking. We just sent out letters for that, I believe, last week. Still waiting to send one of the letters to finalize some numbers, but we should be hearing back in a couple weeks on those items.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Ryan, the daylight that we're talking about, we did incorporate some interior, right, like for the nursing stations?
We did incorporate some skylights into the nurses' stations and above the kitchen, which are larger spaces, but it still doesn't meet the full requirements. So, we're kind of compromising a little bit. We're adding some, but we're not going to meet the full extent, so the variance would just be to allow us not to have to meet the full extent because that would increase the number of windows and things significantly.
Because right now, they're saying that we should have skylights in all the dayrooms and everything, right? And they actually, all those people that use those dayrooms have access to daylight from their bedrooms.
They do, so they can go into their bedrooms if they want to seek it. I think we were thinking more through the staff in some of those.
Right.
Don't have it, so we did add it to those areas.
Right.
But, yeah, the dayrooms don't have it, and really, from what we've heard about this type of program, most of the clients don't really want a lot of light anyway, so they'd kind of like it a little darker. So, we thought we'd keep it out. If they do want daylight, they can go into their bedrooms and they'll have plenty of light from there.
Go ahead, Dave.
Just to clarify, getting these variances, is that, that will impact on the $851,000 or not getting, will it add to it?
Not getting them would require, at least for the daylight one, would require some additional because we haven't designed into add additional skylights. Only the $15,000 or so that was...
The one thing that is in these numbers is the pond because it was shown on the drawings, so if the pond was to go away, then we could maybe pull out about $20,000. What was the third one?
Solar.
The electric.
Oh, right, and that would not be in this either.
It's included at this point.
I don't believe so. Steve, can you clarify that?
Oh, no, that is correct. The only thing that we have included in there is the pond, and so the solar and the daylighting, that's going to require additional design work, and so I think that's what Klein-McCarthy's thoughts were is, let's see if we have to, if we can get a variance, then we don't have to do that design work and incur that cost.
We tried to get just basically what was on the plan so that we weren't running into a, why did you figure this or why didn't you figure this? It was just what's on the plan, so.
Okay.
And that's why the pond is on here.
And just to go back, if I could, to, Mr. Chairman, on the pond itself, back when we did the other project on that site, when we decided to do that pond, we did it with the idea in mind that there would be another rooftop there with the square footage that we have here. So, it meets all of the city's requirements for pond storage under code, and so we firmly believe that that was, that's one that hopefully will be successful on, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may, would it be possible, and I know Dan, if you're the best spot, as far as where we're at with the project, we have a design contingency, and the contingency, Eric, could we speak on that a little bit as far as we're at?
Yeah, there's very healthy, and we use those numbers because those are the numbers that were used in previous estimate, and I think once we get down to the WD completion, and I can't see much more being added or removed from the project, so I think we can definitely justify those numbers to come down. Usually, there is a design and a construction contingency that when you go into the project is so that if the owner decides to make some changes, they have a design contingency to pull that out of, and usually, we see those around the 3% to 5%. The drawings are really coming together really nicely, and I think that there should be no reason to be right around that 3% for each of them, so there's definitely be some dollars there that you could pull.
Can I follow up with that?
Pardon?
Can I follow up with that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, the design, you know, going back, Gertz does things slightly different than our previous projects that we had in terms of where the contingencies are shown, and so the design contingency is similar to what we used to refer to as owner's contingency on the other projects. Is that correct?
Yep, correct.
And then the other contingency would be the contractor contingency.
Right.
So, is it the amount that we end up, whether we reduce that to 3% or whatever, so whatever that amount is, that is always at the discretion of the county whether or not that gets spent?
Sure.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Whereas the other one, you as the construction manager have the ability to use that as you see the need.
Right, and usually, it's used for like, if there's a discrepancy in the drawings.
Or you may have a contractor who gave you a bid and you have to rebid or something.
Exactly, all those kind of things, yep. And the balance doesn't go to us. The balance stays with the district.
Once, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so technically, Commissioner Campbell, the contingencies are your money, so you still have control over what they are. But, yeah, for during construction, if there's errors and omissions, unforeseen conditions, things like that, that all gets brought back to the committee and to the board, so you're updated on all that, so you get to see that. They don't just do those things on their own.
Right.
So, they're still under your purview and approval for those.
And again, if I can on this, and I know they got some other things they want to show us here too, but going to Commissioner Abinga, your, you know, your question about that $851,000, those are ones that we don't, we're not going to be able to get around. Those are B3 ones that we're going to have to do, and they're incorporated into the total bid package of the $12 million 509, right?
Correct.
But, you know, as we look at this sheet down there compared to when we originally started, because of the B3 and because of, Joe did some updates on the FF and E, that number in early on was around $300,000, and now it's up to $577,000. So, you can see where we're about $1.3 million short of where we had, our financial plan had been for, so, and that's what I mentioned here based on our last committee update from Commissioner Mojo and I, that we're still going to have to come up with now with that plan for where that money's going to come from to help pay for the facility. Because the original amount of 13 and 1/2, we had that covered, but because of this extra cost, we still have, we have to kind of go back to the drawing board, so I just want to make sure the full board is aware of that, that we still got some work to do on that piece, so. And we've got a meeting scheduled for that, I believe, right?
Next Wednesday. Commissioner Campbell, Mr. Chair.
Have we got any plans on increasing what we're asking for the grant, or can that be increased?
That's certainly something that we could do, but we would have to do that at the state, through the state level, so.
Okay. Good luck. All right. Any further discussion?
Ryan, I think you wanted to run through some of the plan updates and...
Yeah, I'm still having a little bit of issues here with things showing up correctly, so I don't know if you want to come back or I don't want to waste your time, but I do have a presentation of the model I was hoping to show you guys. Where we're at.
It's not working?
Unfortunately, the colors aren't showing up properly because I think I need to be online and connected.
Can we get him online?
Mr. Chair, maybe suggest a five-minute break and we could grab IT in here quickly.
Okay.
I think it's worth seeing.
Yes, I think so too, so we'll take a five-minute break if we can get the... Okay, now, go ahead, Ryan.
All right, we've got Zane in our office with the model, and he's going to do a walkthrough. This kind of shows the exterior, the materials that we've selected with the committee. We've got some stone base around with some brick and then metal panel at the top, and this is the view of the front entry. He's kind of looking, so you can kind of see, and he's just going to walk in to the building.
That's facing south, right?
This is facing south, so now we're heading north into the building. So, it'll come through the vestibule into a simple lobby, kind of waiting area. This is locked, there's some, just a little bit of seating, nothing too special. Typically, this is going to be used for people who are waiting for buses and things like that, and maybe if somebody's coming in before they get let in, but they didn't want anything too elaborate, so it's a little bit plain. It's got some lockers. It's got a television to kind of show the bus schedule and things like that, and a set of bathrooms off to the left. Okay, we can kind of keep going. So, this is sort of a semi-public-private area in this corridor. People who are coming in for visitation and other types of things would be able to come in here and kind of go into those meeting areas off to the right, and then this kind of goes by the intake and Sally Port Garage. We'll just kind of skip past those areas and go into the main housing area, which is what you'll see here. So, nurses' station is, you'll see that it has windows on all three sides looking in, so there's a lot of visibility from the nurses' area, and they can see into housing pods which have bedrooms off of the housing pods. So, this is kind of the first one here. These are kind of where people will be living. They'll have access to their bedrooms off of this, but this is kind of a living room area, so furniture around a TV, there's some, there's a workstation or a countertop with some games and things like that underneath in the cabinet and so forth, puzzle board if they want. You'll see as we kind of walk down the corridor, on this side, there are three housing units, and then there are, or is there four? There's four on this side, actually, and there's three on the other side. You'll see they're kind of all different colors. That's a way to identify which rooms people are in. We're still working on the actual accent colors of walls and things with the clients, so don't, these aren't final yet, but just gives you an idea of what we were thinking for those spaces. So, we kind of go around, there's this, there's a loop of a corridor that goes around the nurses' stations from the living areas, so we're kind of walking down the corridor Again, a lot of visibility into the spaces is what's desired. And then this loop just continues back through to the other side, which is the same, so. Why don't you go into one of the nurses' stations there, Zane, and kind of see what This is one area, you'll see we added the skylight to this area per B3 to kind of bring some more daylight into the nurses' areas. Both, there's this one and the other nurses' station is identical, it's just mirrored. So, you'll see here, from each of these nurses' stations, they have a lot of visibility into the housing areas.
Those dayrooms or living rooms, as Ryan had described them, those are also the areas where they wanted the skylights, and you can see where that would really be a tremendous amount of additional work to do that.
Yeah, each one of those would, I mean, there's seven of those, you probably have another eight skylights potentially, and then that's, there's other interior spaces that would probably need them too, so you're probably adding another 10 or so. And that's just, there's a few challenges with that, just every single window that you add changes the amount of load on the mechanical systems as well because they're just not as energy efficient, so there's kind of a trade-off there. You're adding additional daylight, but you're also adding expense and taking away from the energy efficiency of your building, so.
So, the variance isn't that we don't want to or don't want to pay the cost, it just doesn't, that extra daylighting just does not suit this building treatment type.
Right.
So, that's what we're really seeking the variance on, not that we just don't want to spend the money.
Yeah.
A question. What if you had a two, three-story building? How would you get all the daylight in every floor?
You wouldn't unless you're trying to do some different clear stories and things like that, but, yeah, we're trying to get as much daylight in as we can that's practical for the occupied areas, but not just trying to get it to every single room. Otherwise, you're just going to end up with a long skinny layout. So, yeah, the two-story, you'd probably have to look at maybe light shafts or do a different type of configuration, but, yeah, that would have been problematic.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Can we get a view into one of the patient rooms? A view into one of the, the rooms, the, yeah.
Do you want to go to one of them? I don't know if any of them are fully rendered, but...
They have a basic furniture included and just the standard finishes.
They're going to look a little narrow in, in the rendering just because of the way the, it compresses to the, fit on the screen. But they're not, I mean, they're, they're not large rooms either. They're, they're seven by 10 approximately.
When a, when a individual goes out of their bedroom and into the living area, do they, is there a requirement that the bedroom doors are always shut or are they left open or? Do we know that?
Maybe that's a question. I defer to Troy for this one.
Troy?
No real requirement, you know, statute-wise for what they actually do.
Okay.
What is the length of stay for a person there? I mean, I know they're all different, I suppose, but is there an average length of stay for?
The average length of stay is right around two days. With our withdrawal management program, there really is no limit to how long they can stay. With detox, it's up to 72 hours, not including weekends and holidays. But with withdrawal management, it's all based on how they're doing, you know? Sometimes we get people that are really withdrawing. They need more than two days, so we keep them longer. A lot of clients might be waiting for a treatment bed to open up with the state. So we keep them longer, you know, waiting for that too. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Now kind of exiting the, the nurses area, we're back into the staff side, which has carpeted floors. It's a, goes to the kitchen, break area over there, past some bathrooms. There's some, some janitor's closet along here, access to the mechanical room. And then here, there's a, access to the right goes to the conference area. And then you'll see, right to the right, there's a conference room. This is the large conference room. And further down the hall goes to the staff offices. So there's five staff offices. And again, these are on the perimeter as well, so there's windows for the, for those staff offices. And now we're heading back towards the entry, kind of from the back hall. And we'll kind of go past some of the, the conference areas again. If you want to go through the conference room. This particular one has two exits, so one off the corridor closer to the staff and then one closer to the other conference areas. Group, large visitation area. That's what that room is. And then smaller conference room. And then back to the other corridor where we started. So this is kind of where visitation and then back to the lobby.
What are the wall heights in this?
For the most part, we've got nine-foot walls. The reason being is, is we don't want anybody being able to jump up and hit the ceilings.
That's exactly why I asked the question.
Yep, and there is actually, in the, around the nurses station and the dayrooms, there are 10 feet.
Okay.
So most, most areas are nine feet, but some areas are 10 even to make it a little harder to jump up.
I don't mean to change the design or anything like that, but there stays are normally two, two days, three days. Do we need all the conference rooms? I mean, is there a need for all? Is there a lot of conference going on?
Commissioner, we've had some discussion about potential partnerships with other providers in the community and, and part of the ability to expand programming and partnerships really would be helpful to have those spaces to provide that. That's part of the discussion that's gone into the design.
If any to add, Troy, or?
Yeah, having a large staff, you know, conference room so we can have staff meetings, trainings. Right now, I think there's a lot more we can do with training staff that'll come in handy. Doing the CPR, which is mandatory, and hopefully some CPI stuff in the future. We also use the one conference room is going to be kind of our, a lot of our clients who our commitment holds have court hearings. So we'd be doing kind of IT, you know, having that in those rooms so we can, we have court hearings with the clients while keeping them, you know, away from kind of the staff area.
Thank you. All right.
And it is a 32-bed facility right now.
Right, okay.
Zane, do you want to go outside and take a kind of look of maybe of the exterior a bit? Further out, maybe just from the road? Or the back of the parking lot, yeah, from over there.
Oh.
That's good. Just, just to give you a bigger sense of the, of the design.
Those trees grew fast.
They do. There's a... This is probably 20 years from now, or? I don't know if these, these redwoods will grow, but...
Take some poplars in there.
I'm surprised you don't have palm trees on there.
Yes, considering there are no trees on the site currently, this is, this is very optimistic. Kind of walking down the corridor, or corridor, the sidewalk, which goes to the staff entrance. And so this is kind of the east side of the building. There is a staff entrance that's off here, which is right next to the offices. You can either use that or come in the front. And then there is the outdoor fenced area there is, is kind of the part that's for, for clients if they do need or desire to go outside. This is the alternate. Here is this fenced-in area. But it was, it was discussed that it would be nice to allow some people to go out, get some fresh air if they are there longer than the, the two days.
And that's referred to as the screened-in patio here.
Yep.
Yeah, just, just a note, I, in my estimate, I have composite fence like it's shown there. But the landscaping plans show a decorative wrought iron fence.
Oh, okay. Now, this is the type of fence it would be because they, they kind of want to screen and not allow anybody to have access into that space, pass anything to a client. So it does want to be a paneled fence like this.
If we included camera and interior and exterior in all of this, that area would be monitored, wouldn't it?
Yes. Yeah, there are cameras throughout.
It's partly where FFNE went way up.
Yeah, I imagine. Does it have a, I mean, we'll have video that's retained? Is it all, is it all videoed or is it something that you'd have to activate?
It's typically motion activated. So if I need to go back and get video for some type of criminal thing, you're able to go back and, and burn that DVD.
And you've got a retention policy that you've got in place?
Yeah, it's like, right now, I think we're about 30 days. I'm not sure what the new system will be. Seven days?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So in regards to the other potential alternate that's included in the project, is that, is the parking lot that's, would be on the north side? The, in terms of the entrance for the employees, that appears to be kind of in the middle of the building. Is that correct? Like on the east side?
It's a little closer to this parking. Yeah, it is, it is kind of in the middle, but I think this, where, where we're at right now is in one of the parking stalls that's in the alternate. And so it's just a, you know, shorter walk.
Okay. Okay. Because I, that's, that's something that we're going to have to discuss based on, on, you know, if the, would the front parking lot be adequate for both people coming in and our staff?
It currently is. The, the future parking lot was actually intended for the addition of, of the mental health facility if that ever got added.
Okay.
So the current front parking lot is enough for public, for both facilities and staff, until they add the, that additional.
So that additional lot could be considered in the future? You know, when, when and if that ever happens, where we would do that additional?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, I think one of the things that we, we are running into though is the, the garbage has to, by, by Morehead City Code can't be in the front of the building. It has to be up the back of the building. And so somehow...
We don't need a whole parking lot to do that.
No, but there's, the access aisle is designed for that. Yeah, that's why it's in, the parking is an alternate, but we still have the access area there in order to access the garbage because Morehead doesn't want to see that on the front of the building, so.
You can see that's based on the sidewalks and stuff there. That's why we're kind of looking at that co-deal with the resource recovery to have that skid steer type of a deal for Joe to, and to be able to use for maintenance work there on our own, even though we'd probably contract parking lot work and stuff on.
I just want that flat roof up front. Is that a good place for snow to collect on or? Would that be tapered roof or?
Well, there, there will be, I mean, even with, with all flat roofs, they will retain some snow. That, but it's kind of a, a screen to basically kind of keep the snow from falling along that entry area. It'll kind of keep it out a ways so that the, the entry is protected from rain and snow. It'll hold some until it melts and then it'll drain away. There's internal drains.
Any more questions or? Okay. You got some more pictures for us or?
That's it. We can, we'll include some pictures, some actual hand, you know, images that we can send to you guys and, you know, pack it, but that's it for the video presentation. Thank you.
Okay.
I know, I know you had sent around a deal earlier on about the exterior colors and I think there was like three different options and I...
The metal panel up on top, yes.
Yeah, and I think there was a kind of agreement on, by the most that one, a two-tone was...
This is the option that was selected, so that was favored of the three. But yeah, we definitely, you know, give you guys input on some design decisions as well and what you like and so, yep.
I don't know if it makes you feel better or worse, but that was the consensus of what was selected in our office internally too, so. If that makes you feel better or worse, you're thinking like we were.
As long as you didn't come up with the color that's in the front of this building, that's... I'm not a fan.
Okay, very good. So do we have to accept this proposal or do we just, it's just sharing, news sharing?
Just an information.
Just information, okay. You have anything to further to add? Anybody, Dan, you got something or?
No, I don't have anything. You know, once the, maybe mid to late February, we'll take another look at the, through the drawings. If anything changes, we'll get that updated and go from there.
Okay.
In the meantime...
It goes out for bidding about six weeks.
In the meantime, our, we'll be meeting to, you know, there will still have the construction meetings as we learn more about the variance stuff and all that as well on it. But we'll be trying to come up with a plan too for that where we're short right now. We'll, we're working on some solutions for that, so.
Okay. Very good. Anything else there? Mr. Larson, you got anything to add or?
I will just add one more thing about the design is that as we're working through with the committee, we are looking at ways of saving additional money and pulling some money out of that through value engineering. There is a few things that we could still do to kind of do that. I won't go into great detail today, but we have, you know, in the past, we've, we've, in pre-design, we reduced the square footage of the building, took some things out of it and saved about $800,000 through that process, estimated. We've also looked at some changes interior-wise that we could do as well. So some of it is just kind of nuts and bolts things, but we're certainly, as we kind of work through the next six weeks, we'll try to get that, that price down to a little bit more, so.
Yeah, if you can work on about a million dollars, that would help. Okay, well, thank you for the presentation. It's a very, gives a good idea what it's going to look like. Thank you for that. Do we have time to think your thing or we have to?
We can try to do it in five minutes. I guess it's...
Okay, we'll start on that tonight. That will be the additional item that we added to energy legislation.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked that this be added today. We have, there's some legislation that's currently going through the House and Senate in St. Paul in regards to... Miss my sheet here. There you go. In regards to waste or energy facilities. And basically what, what some of the legislation would do would pretty much shut down waste energy facilities that produce electricity. And the, the thing that's making me feel a little bit better right now is the, is the one facility that doesn't produce electricity is Prairie Lake Solid Waste. We produce steam that, that's sold and that's, that's a different caliber. However, there's concern over, over the proposals that they, if they shut down all those other waste energy facilities, it would have, it would have a huge impact on Prairie Lake Solid Waste. In addition to that, and then, and again, I'm, I'm, my information comes from our Prairie Lake Solid Waste Director that's been sharing the information with me. And that in addition, there's also some proposals out there that would require a carbon tax, carbon emissions tax. And of course, we, we do have carbon emissions at that facility as well. And those numbers, I think the numbers that Chris McConan had mentioned to me, it would start off as a $5 per ton and it could go up to $240 per ton. Well, there you're talking several million dollars a year in cost to our facility. Again, that would almost put us out of business with, with the carbon emissions alone, with the tax that they would be proposing. The, the issue with this is, and of course, you know, everybody, everybody wants a cleaner environment, but the fact of the matter is, is, is whatever we have going through that facility, the only other option we have for it is to put it in our landfill. The, the issue with this is, and of course, you know, everybody, everybody wants a cleaner environment, but the fact of the matter is, is, is whatever we have going through that facility, the only other option we have for it is to put it in our landfill. And our landfill has a limited capacity, and it also produces methane gas. And the methane gas is probably even worse than what we're talking about in terms of the emissions that that facility would, and by the way, that, that facility has to still meet MPCA standards for the emissions. And so, so there's a Senate-House file, um, do I have the numbers here?
Forty-one, probably.
Senate-House is seven and four.
Seven and, yeah, okay. Yeah, and I, and again, I, you know, I think it would be good for us to reach out to both, you know, to our, our local legislatures, and just talk about the concern that we have with this, and I, and again, I, part of what really concerns me is, is we are fifteen percent owner in that facility in Purim. And we happen to still have, and I, some of these things, the ultimate deal, where they have to have one hundred percent, uh, carbon-free emissions by 2040. One of the things that concerns me anyway is that we have, as a fifteen percent owner, we still have a debt on that facility of about twenty-five million dollars. Our share of that twenty-five million dollars is around four million dollars. So if something happens to that facility, whether it's through legislation that would close it, or whether it would be a tax on emissions that would make it unaffordable. You can see the, in addition to what it would do to our landfills, what it would do to us financially. There, there are significant numbers. You know, and I, I, you know, I know Chris McConan from, from Prairie Lake Solid Waste, he's, he's been actively doing this, I know, I think Matt from AMC put out a, I think AMC put out a bulletin regarding this legislation, and the concerns that it would raise. I, I do believe from what, and I, I got this secondhand from Chris, but I do understand that MPCA themselves do not support this legislation. For, for the fact that we talked about, because of the additional, you know, it's just, it's solving one problem and creating another. And so, I, I thought it was important enough to, to raise here, I just read now that, through that deal from Matt, that they're actually having hearings on it this week, September eighteenth, I think tomorrow, yeah.
Tomorrow, January.
And so I, you know, I, I wanted to have that open discussion with our board to determine what we feel we should do next. I, I think there needs to be some sort of communication that expresses concern. I asked Chris McConan to put together some notations as to how this would impact our facility, and I gave that hand, I just gave that handout to each of you here. And it, you know, and it, while he says, while this does not directly harm Platte, Prairie Lake Solid Waste, these larger facilities represent eighty percent of the state's waste-to-energy program, losing them will harm us greatly. Those are, those comes from our Solid Waste Director.
Who's pushing this?
Well, it's, it, right now, it's, it's, right now, it's the Democratic Party that's, that's both in the House and the Senate. They're the, they're the authors of it anyway, so I, I, I couldn't give a direct name, but, but.
Mr. Chair, if I might, as a member of the Solid Waste Committee and serving as Kevin's alternate on Prairie Lakes, but also as our member of the AMC Environment Natural Resources Policy Group, I think it's important for people watching to understand that, while climate change is a huge focal point for this legislature, our community members should be really proud at the efforts that Clay County has taken to really recycle the recyclables that are available, to limit the trash that is going into our landfill, and really, in an essence, over the last eight years, I would say, has, has effectively increased our landfill lifespan at least twenty to forty years. And it's hard to really understand without walking through or seeing exactly what these resource, or these recycling facilities really do, but they, they really do take the waste stream and, and separate out items that we can recycle, take items that we cannot recycle, and, and as we are burning them, yes, it's producing smaller, it's producing an emission, but it's a much smaller value that would, would happen normally if it was just in, in the landfill itself. And so I, I think it's, it's really important to understand that by taking a legislation like this, that I think is meant, meant well to take the earth and its health into account, it's really not exactly doing the full intent of what they're hoping to do that. So, while I think it's important also that people know that counties are supportive of efforts to advance clean energy, this legislation is removing certain solid waste resource recovery facilities from the list of eligible energy technology that would affect, effectively lead to the shuttering of several resource recovery facilities in Minnesota. And also there, through the thirteen facilities, more than thirty of Minnesota's eighty-seven counties currently contribute to facilities like this, and I agree, I, I'm concerned, I think that it's, while maybe well-intended, I think there's some pretty damning consequences if something like this were to happen, significantly to what it effectively would cost, not only environmentally, but financially to local counties. So I, I also agree, I think we should send a strong letter of dissent to both House File Seven and Senate File Four, but also subsequently Senate File Forty-One that would shut down four facilities at a quicker, quicker rate. Certainly, we wanna be part of the table to talk about how we can better be partners in resource management, but this is not the answer.
Yeah, just to, to share or echo some of the comments that Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo have made. We have seen, and this is well-intended on the part of the people that have written this legislation, but we've seen well-intended legislation where there was no consideration of secondary consequences. This totally disregards the massive amount of greenhouse gases that'll be released in landfills if we have to extend them to cover all, not just in, in what we have at Prairie Lakes, but all over the state. The massive amount of greenhouse gases that are gonna be released, so it really doesn't go towards addressing clean energy issues. And the impact it's gonna have financially on counties. And if this were effective in dealing with, with our, our pollution concerns, that'd be great, but it simply offsets one problem for another, at a great cost, and at a, a cost of the effectiveness of counties to provide waste services. So, we really do need to send a strongly worded letter to our legislators, and I would also include the Governor's Office in that as well, so they could be aware of the issues that are being brought up with this particular course of action.
Not, not having first, you know, I, I happened to print off by accident today the entire, here it is, this is the entire document that's, that deals with the legislation on this, the entire printed of it. It's, it's extensive, I, I tried not to get into the weeds too much here, but the fact of the matter, the weeds is where the problems are. And, and at least until we get clarification as to what this does statewide, you know, from a statewide concern, and, you know, and in talking with the other facilities that actually produce electricity, where ours does not, but we still need to be concerned about what, if all those are shut down and we're the only ones, and, and by the way, I, I might add, we've had this discussion about PFAS or PFAS, however you wanna talk about it. And one of the potential solutions to those is burning it and getting it hot. And if we don't have any facilities anymore that could do that, we're, we're eliminated in the other potential for, for a solution to that down the road. And it may be another thing that we could do, Mr. Chair and Steve, I, you know, I think something in writing is important, but I think by the end of today, when we have Tim who records this meeting, to break out this particular section, the conversation we're having, so we, so they can hear the, the short dialogue we've had here, we can actually send that to them as a link, so that, that they can hear about the conversation we've had this morning. I think that, that might be something that they could, they could get and they could see it by tonight, and actually see the, the conversation that we're having and the concerns that we have, and, and maybe they can turn around and say, well, you know, we're, we're all wet on the subject and we, you know, that's not what's going on, but because, you know, and when it comes from AMC, and it's in the, you know, a concern in the AMC Platte Committee from the lobbyists, that this is a concern, it's something we need to address, so.
Okay.
Just a quick question, the hearing tomorrow is had in the House, or the Senate?
Yes, that is, I just pulled up the House file, sorry, now I have to go back. Sorry, yes, tomorrow, House File Seven is in the House, the Senate Energy Utilities and Climate Committee is sent to, are sent to hear that for the Senate the following week on the twenty-third.
I'm just curious, and then, I don't know, Commissioner Mojo, I mean, is there a way we could make a quick call, possibly to Ryan Martenson, to see exactly where they're at?
Yes, I believe there is a virtual option for that, that's why I was just trying to search that up, it might take a second to.
Okay, yeah, just so, again, you know, just having that message to our people, our legislators, especially the House deals coming up right away, but also knowing exactly where our environmental people stand with AMC.
And I, I'm quite certain that there's gonna be representation of these facilities, who will be trying to put information into the record in regards to that conversation as well. I think for our local legislatures, I think it's important for them to understand the concerns that we have right now with that legislation. And the sooner we can get something to them, the better.
I think it's important to note that there, while there are thirty-five co-authors in the House and five in the Senate, neither of our local representatives are on that, so it's certainly important to forward our comments to them and, and help educate. I think that Prairie Lakes had initially had a conversation in early December about making sure that they were open to any tours, if any individuals would like that. I do know there is a YouTube video that Prairie Lakes had put out, an educational component piece that I think would be helpful as we talk correspondence to, and tell a, a local tour can happen.
So once it get down to our recommendation, did we just send a letter, or should we email them, or?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chair, I, I would, I would move that we send a letter to our local legislatures, and I, I think we could then include the Senate and House Chair of these individual committees that are having these hearings, as well as Commissioner Eberinger had mentioned, even to the Governor's Office, just expressing our concerns with, with the energy legislation that would impact waste management. And I, you know, and I think you can see for yourselves, I think if we even talk about the concerns that, you know, Steve, maybe you could draft a letter that incorporates language that's already in the, that came out in the AMC flyer, as well as I think that's important for our legislatures to understand the financial, a financial result and the impacts to us as having a landfill. So I would move that we send a letter out there, and the sooner that can go out, the better, and that we also submit a tape of today's meeting to our local legislatures as well.
Second the motion.
Yeah, we got a motion by Commissioner Campbell, and second by Commissioner Mojo, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
If I can, Mr. Chair, if I can just add, Steve, could we, could we also send that to, copy that to our Prairie Lakes County Partners? Or maybe, maybe Cory could do that, but.
Last thing, if I might, I did find the hearing is set for three o'clock. And there is a deadline by one o'clock today to submit a written testimony, and wondering if, while it's prob, while they already have speakers to testify, I think submitting that letter to, it's Mike Mole's hand with the House by one o'clock today, that can be included in that hearing information, sorry, I'll forward you that.
Forward it to him.
Gives you plenty of time to do that, right?
Yeah, he's gonna be busy.
Well, I, you know, I, financially, it's a huge issue for.
Yes, it is.
Yes, very, very big.
Environmentally too, I mean, it really has a lot of negative consequences, both sides.
Okay, with that, we're gonna go into the public hearing, have to post this for. Me right now. And we need a motion to open the hearing.
Yeah, need a motion, submit a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Eberinger, second by Commissioner Campbell, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, so this is a request for a major platted subdivision, brought forward by Jason Garrick and Garrick Properties LLC, and then Lowry Engineering is the, doing the design on, on this subdivision. And so, this is the applicant, he's seeking approval to plat a eight-lot subdivision in Tanson Township, and at the, their September twentieth, twenty-twenty-two meeting, the Planning Commission recommended this request for approval unanimously. Just some information about the property, so it's, let's see, it's this property up here, the, the southern half of it, roughly, it's an eighty-acre parcel, it's zoned special protection shoreline and agricultural general, surrounding land use is agricultural, residential and vacant land, and then the land use on the parcel is, is agricultural, industrial and rural vacant. And from our comprehensive, twenty-fourty-five comprehensive plan, we have goals and objectives related to residential land use, one is promoting and encouraging quality and diversified residential development, and encourage non-farm residential, residential development to occur in small lots around unincorporated communities, provide opportunities for quality rural residential development in Clay County, for our natural resources category, protecting, enhancing remnant tracts of native prairie and forests, and then for shoreline and stormwater, protecting and enhancing the health and vitality of Clay County's surface waters, lakes, river streams, for the benefit and enjoyment of Clay County residents and visitors. So those are the goals. In our development code, if you are going to subdivide a parcel, that's gonna result in one or more non-residential lot, or three or more residential lots, then you would have to plat that. Also in our code, we do have dimensional standards for our special protection zoning district for, for lakes and rivers, and so you can see those in that blue box there, and those were included in your packet as well. in that blue box there. And those were included in your packet as well. And so here is the plat. The preliminary plat was recommended by the Planning Commission. And they have the right to review the final plat as well, but they waive that right just because the changes on here weren't very substantial. So you can see you have eight riparian, four eight lots, four riparian lots along the, along Soleim Lake here, and then four non- riparian lots. One thing about this subdivision is it would require the construction of a new public right-of-way. So that's going to tentatively be, or that's going to be 154th Avenue South. So that was reviewed by our county engineer. And it kind of meets all the requirements and standards of the county. And I'm going to get to this road here again in just a second. These are basically the lots. They essentially meet all of the dimensional standards for our requirements for shoreline areas. There's going to be an internal road. All the lots will be serviced by septic and well. There's going to be restrictive covenants and stormwater infrastructure and a SWIP as well, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. The soils in the area can support septic. And there's definitely enough groundwater to support our minimum requirements of five gallons per minute for a well. Tanson Township had several comments. There was a meeting in September. A lot of them related to just the surrounding road conditions, and then also the subdivision road maintenance. And so a lot of these comments were addressed in the restrictive covenants. There were some concerns about if there's going to be people parking like motor homes or mobile homes, anything like that. And so these restrictive covenants address these issues by providing some minimum standards for a residential dwelling in the subdivision. In addition, this is also a requirement of our, of creating a new public right-of-way in our county code for a subdivision, is that the developer has to enter into a road agreement with the township. So Tansom Township and the developer have a road agreement that's been recorded with the Clay County Recorder. And essentially, once the road is constructed, they would be adopting that road as a township road. Just with the other just conditions and then some comments just related to those, there is native prairie on the site. It's degraded. I went out with the Minnesota DNR, they confirmed that it was primarily just broom. There's some notable species of special concern in there to the state, but severely degraded. There's also a wetland easement on the property. And just up here, developer and everyone is aware of that. And that is also on the plat as well. Just little background on the lake, it's about a 69-acre lake. The max depth, according to the DNR, is 10 feet. But it used to have an outlet on the south side, and that outlet was removed. And so this lake has actually come up considerably. So there's probably, it's probably deeper than 10 feet. It hasn't been assessed for water quality. And there's five other residences to the south in the Soleim Beach subdivision. And so that Soleim Beach subdivision in this picture is right here. You can see, I mean, you can't even see really any development there. But there are houses in there. There was some discussion at the Planning Commission about steep slopes and bluffs. So on this map, just looking at the grade, we consider anything less than 12% to be not a bluff, anything between, or a steep slope, anything between 12 and 18% grade to be a steep slope. And then anything above could potentially be a bluff. So even though this is, this particular property does have a lot of relief and rolling hills, there are areas, buildable area on each of these lots, where you can have a level surface, not have to worry about doing too many alterations on the building site or anything like that. This concern to the, both the prairie, native prairie, the impacts to the lake, water quality, things like that, and then also just the steep, some of the steep terrain was also addressed by the developer in the restrictive covenants, the 11 through 14. And so, and that was basically kind of what the Planning Commission was looking for too. Just some pictures of the property. This is looking east, looking southeast. This is the, one of the roads that comes off of County 10. The township actually, one of the concerns with this road is because it's so close to the lake, there can be some issues with the conditions of the road. So construction traffic, they have a sign basically to divert traffic to the north on 150th Avenue off of County 32, or State 32. So the Planning Commission recommendation was to recommend approval to you as the board. They did put four conditions on it, that the final plat must conform to county subdivision regulations and Minnesota Statute 505. Lots must conform to the Clay County Shoreland Regulations. Developer must provide restrictive covenants. And the developer must have a recordable road agreement with Tansom Township executed prior to county board final plat review and decision. As you can see, I put checkmarks on all of these. So that makes it official that they met all those conditions. And here's the plat again. Any questions for me at all?
I have a, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Excuse me. So under these conditions, condition number three, developer must provide restrictive covenants. It's my understanding that governments don't acknowledge restrictive covenants.
We-
Because that becomes something that is between the landowners.
Correct.
And we don't, we don't even recognize restrictive covenants, as far as I know.
What, yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Campbell, we would not enforce the covenants. What the covenants do is they would provide the developer and any property owners essentially a legal avenue for addressing any issues. And then they also give any potential buyers some expectations of what can be done on the property, how the property is going to be, how properties can be managed, and how they would look essentially. When I'm reviewing building permits for subdivisions with restrictive covenants, I would typically, even though we don't enforce the covenants, my responsibility is to make sure that the building would comply with our code. But I do oftentimes will just look at the covenants and just to see if there will be, would be any potential issues, then I can notify the applicant or the property owner about that.
You know, I understand the purpose of restrictive covenants. You know, I think it's kind of a way to mutually agree upon something amongst the neighbors and neighboring concerns. I just, I just find it unique that we're putting it as a condition that they must develop or provide a restrictive covenants when we don't enforce them. I just find that kind of unique, that we would require something that we don't enforce.
Yeah, and that's something that's, that is required, that's in our code too. Yep, that, it's basically essentially part of the, it's not part of the plat, but I believe it's something that when our code was developed, that the county board at that time wanted to see that there is some sort of mechanism in place for addressing issues that might arise, even though we don't actually enforce them.
They're not part of our code, they're not?
Yeah, it doesn't say in our code anywhere that the county enforces covenants. If we did that, that's all we'd be doing. We wouldn't be doing anything else.
That's my point.
Yep. But, but really, what we are, what we do require is just that there is some sort of agreement in place.
Got a question on that gravel pit. Is that in operation now, or is it?
They are closing that gravel pit up. So this was my understanding, is this past year was the last year that that was going to be in operation. Maybe a little bit into the spring, but I think they still have to do some reclamation on it. That's my understanding.
I mean, you understand, but is there something that says they're going to do it?
Well, the landowner's lease with the gravel company is expired, or is ended.
The next question I got, you said that road going into the area is going to be a township road?
Yes.
And that means the county's going to maintain that road, I take it? If it's added to the list?
Yeah, my understanding, talking with our county engineers, we would do, would do maintenance, but wouldn't do snow removal.
Oh, okay. Well, that was my question on those cul-de-sacs and getting the snow out of those.
Yep, it wouldn't, yeah.
Maintain it, but we wouldn't take the snow out of there.
Yep. It would be probably likely similar to other townships. I know, like with Oakport Townships, we'll do, we'll maintain the roads, but then the township will contract out for snow removal with a private company.
Very good. Thank you. Any other question? Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, similarly, just following that train of thought. With that township road comes in, I'm looking at the survey, and I'm just curious. So we got the cul-de-sac, but yet it's surveyed for continuation of that road, or am I reading that wrong?
That would be essentially a dedicated, like, right-of-way in the event that a road would go into the future to connect. Right now, there isn't any roads around the east side of the lake. Yep. But it's, it wouldn't be going in in the future, or it wouldn't be going in now, just to leave that option open.
Any other questions? Okay. Anything further?
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anything from the commissioners?
Was there, was there public comment on this for or against, or?
We, since the Planning Commission meeting, we have not received any public comments, just beyond, on the Planning Commission meeting. The, at the Planning Commission meeting, I think the major concerns were the impacts to the roads. There was a couple concerns about impacts to the lake, impacts to views, and aesthetics and things like that. Those are the comments that were heard at the Planning Commission. But since then, we have not had any comments.
None of the houses going in there would be by the lakes, though. There's no lake by that, is there?
The lake is on the south side of the-
Outside.
Yep, yep. So, and they'd have to be set back 200 feet. And there's so, and of these eight lots, it would be four lots that would be on the lake.
All righty. Okay, if there's no further, you channel out there, have you, got any comments you'd like to make? Please identify, go to the mic over there and identify yourself.
John Lowry with Lowry Engineering. And Chair and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity here to appear in front of you. You know, I don't have anything to add to what Matt provided. We're here to answer any questions, any technical details or any of that that you may have. We'll say we've worked closely with the Planning Commission and with county staff, as well as with the Township Board, to make sure that, you know, as Matt said, that the boxes are checked. And we're doing this in a responsible manner. Commissioner Krabinoff, even, you know, the conversation about the continuation of that roadway, you know, county code calls for responsible and safe maneuvering. And you know, so that's something we brought to the table to make sure that should the opportunity to get rid of the cul-de-sac in the future present itself, that we can do that. So, yeah, proud of the work that we're doing and appreciate the opportunity to be here and answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any questions for him? All right, very good. You, sir, would you like to make any comments?
Well, I'm just here.
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
Move to close the hearing.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to comment, I'm going to go back to my previous questions. And it becomes a, putting a criteria or stipulation about must provide a restrictive covenants. And I just, I'm cautious about that from the standpoint, if we're telling somebody to incorporate a restrictive covenants that we don't enforce, I'm just not understanding that. You know, if there gets to be a dispute at some point in time, do they come back to the county and say, well, and, well, the county said to have a restrictive covenants, but we didn't say what they are? It just, it seems odd that we would incorporate that language into something and we don't enforce it.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I feel like that kind of, though, goes towards the permitting capacity with the Planning Commission. I mean, there are points that we add based on public concern and questions. And the reality is, you know, this is, needs to be permitted. And so if you aren't following what restrictive covenants, I mean, that's really a way to control, to make sure that, I get what you're saying, but I feel like the element of authority falls within the planning, planning department, really. And similar to what we've done with rural businesses, we'll add conditions on that. And if they aren't following those conditions, then-
But those are, and this is the point I'm trying to make here, and I don't disagree with you a bit. But the point I'm making is, is when we establish those things and we do those things, there's specified individual criteria or conditions. This one simply says to establish a restrictive covenants. We have no idea what's going to be in those covenants, and we don't enforce them. So again, I just wonder why we're incorporating something. I get that they want to have something that the eight parcels there, who would be the, I'm assuming it's going to be an incorporated area, to have a restrictive covenants.
But they still have to go to the planning department for review of a building permit. And that's where then, that layer of oversight is. Am I wrong?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Mojo, that's correct. Really, this is, I see this as similar to a condition that we might put on an interim use permit for like a gravel mine, that they have all their state permitting done. We don't control the state permitting. We don't know, we can't, don't enforce the state permitting, but we do require it. Similar to, that they have have that permit. In the handful or so of subdivisions that I've brought before you as a board, they've all had restrictive covenants in them. And I can't actually think of a subdivision that doesn't have restrictive covenants included with those.
But did we require them?
Yes.
Yes.
Interesting. Restrictive covenants, the only way you can enforce a restrictive covenants is basically through a lawsuit amongst the landowners.
Correct.
So why are we involved with that?
I think it would probably go back to the mission of, say, the county planning department to protect the public health, welfare, and safety of residents of the county. A restrictive covenants is a mechanism to accomplish that by giving landowners an actual legal way to, to solve disputes within their neighborhood, and to protect their private property. That would be, I guess, probably the most basic reasoning for having restrictive covenants. Even though we don't enforce them, we, as a county, understand what they do and what their purpose is for, and that it would protect the welfare, safety, morals, general welfare of the public.
I'm just, I'm throwing it out there. I just, I'm kind of fascinated by this idea that we're incorporating something that we don't police.
That's a good question.
Well, and we do that, again, as I mentioned, with gravel permits and other permits all the time, that we require, we put conditions on these permits about things that we don't enforce, but- that we don't enforce, but, um, they need to have to operate.
But if they don't have those, then that's a condition for the county to revoke the permit.
Exactly.
So, yes, we're not policing every day, however, if it becomes brought to our attention that it's not something that they're in compliance with, we can revoke permits.
Yep, that's correct.
We can revoke a, a permit because it's something in the restrictive covenants?
Um, in the example I think that Commissioner Mojo was giving, say, if we required a, uh, gravel mining operation to have like a, uh, a stormwater permit?
Mm-hmm.
And they did not have a stormwater permit, because it's a condition of the county permit, we can bring it back and we can revoke it.
But if it's a condition of a restrictive covenants, can we enforce it?
If it's in, if it's in the covenant, no.
That's my point.
And that's, and we don't want to do that. We just want to make sure that they have them.
But if they don't have a restrictive covenant, and say, however, two of the lots, okay, are coming to you with a building permit, and you review it and find out that the subdivision doesn't have a restrictive covenant, we would not approve the permit, because it's not in compliance of the agreement.
Um, so you would actually just not approve the final plat?
So there is a mechanism?
So there wouldn't be a plat. Um, for the, for the restrictive covenants, we have, we literally have nothing to do with them, we're only requiring them, the planning commission recommended acquire, requiring them, because it gives the, the residents of the subdivision a legal mechanism if they need to, uh, solve a, a dispute, um, within their neighborhood, outside of all of our codes and standards. The whole point is to protect the public welfare, and that's one of the missions of, of Clay County Planning and Zoning. And so, if they didn't have restrictive covenants, I mean, I guess that would be all fine and good, but if there was a serious, uh, dispute with property lines, or if someone was, um, there was a serious issue between neighbors, uh, it would be much harder for that to be resolved, because there is no legal mechanism for, for doing that, um, as prescribed by the covenants.
Mr. Chair, I have one final. Uh, I don't think I need to remind this board that there is a, um, community, uh, in rural Clay County that has, um, there's been, not community, but neighborhood, for lack of a better term, that we've dealt with a lot. And a lot of the, um, problems that we've had is where there really isn't a mechanism to fall back on to enforce what certain residents think needs to happen, um, and this is, that's just a, a case of how we could save staff and, uh, staff time and community members, a lot of headache by having something like this in place.
Yep, and I, that's a very good point, Commissioner Mojo. One thing I can add, what requiring restrictive covenants also, um, does protect the county in some ways, because when we get certain complaints, uh, that are not within the bounds of, of the county to address, because we're only looking at our county code or what have you, we can, we have something to say to that, to that resident, this is, you should refer to your, your covenants, um, to address this issue, this sounds like an issue, you should maybe consult with an attorney and look at your, at your covenants to address an issue like this.
But whether, whether or not there's a covenants in this exact example that was brought up in this one area, the issue that one landlord might have because somebody else is infringing on what they think is their property, that, again, is a private, uh, it, it's not, it's not something, and that's, in those instances, we've said, you know, we've, we've got the meets and bounds, we establish those, we set the rules on the, when the plat is created about the property lines, that's all done. We, we do that as part of the, of the plat. But if somebody infringes on somebody else's property, that's, that's something, just, just like right now, we can't enforce restrictive covenants, so they end up having to go through a process, there's a process through the public court system that, that determines those outcomes.
Yep. Correct.
And that, and, and the, the advantage of a restrictive covenants, I'm not suggesting that they're not important, I'm just, I'm just suggesting that if we don't have any authority over them, why are we requiring?
I think it's, it's too bad that our county attorney's not?
Yeah.
Right now, because, um, he has spoken to the planning commission on several instances why it is important, and it really does protect, and, you know, I, we've done a lot of these, and this has always been included.
Yep, and in this case, they're, they're done, they're modeled after a previous, um, plat that came before you that also required these restrictive covenants, uh, as a condition, um, and they're ready to be recorded.
Did the restrictive covenants proposed here, were they, um, were they, do we know what they are?
They should have been included in your packet.
Yeah. If I may, just briefly, um, so I too agree, uh, with restrictive covenants, it doesn't bother me that they're in here. I, I do think for the enjoyment of the property, for everybody to know who's gonna be part of that community, what things are, that there is some, uh, understanding or consistency, I, I just think that, um, that just creates a better environment right off the get-go for everybody involved. Uh, and also, uh, once mentioned, I think, you, you had some, um, potential concerns even during the hot, uh, hearing process from others, it's a way to address those also.
Yep.
I agree with what you say. I'm not gonna not approve.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the, um, uh, what we have here. Public hearing for, uh, Solon Hills' final plat decision.
Second.
Give me a motion by Commissioner Kravenhoff, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? I lost my battery here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to committed reports. Uh, we'll start out with Kevin this week.
Oh, okay. Oh, let me... Open my calendar here. I believe my only meeting... We did have, um, yeah, my only meeting since last Tuesday was the, uh, dispatch meeting that we had, the governance meeting, the kickoff meeting, and we went through and elected, um, a chair, which is Chad Peterson from Cass County, and the vice chair was Mayor Carlson from Moorhead. Um, we did go over our 2023 meeting schedule, uh, we did, um, appoint our members to the Budget and Finance Committee from Clay County, that would be myself and Lori Johnson will serve on that. And, uh, the executive committee, those on the executive committee would be Sheriff Emting and Joe Vaxlin from Barnesville, right? Am I correct? Yeah, Barnesville. And, uh, then we did, uh, have a little discussion on facility updates, where we're at on that, I think we're gonna get a more in-depth one at our, our next meeting in February on that. And I think that, yeah, uh...
And, Mr. Chair, if I could interrupt, Mr. Campbell, uh, as you mentioned, part of the, part of the, uh, assignment that, um, Ms. Johnson and Mr. Campbell are part of is the Budget and Finance Committee, that is a separate media, meeting outside of the Board of Authority, and so I would, uh, ask the board would consider that for, for Perdime and Miles.
Mr. Chair, I would make that motion.
Second. A motion by, Jenny, second by Dave. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, Mr. Chair, I believe that concludes my report.
Dave?
Okay, um, on the 10th, myself and Mr. Kravenhoff met with Rory Beal and Kathy McKay, just a discussion on some of the, uh, issues that we're looking at on funding for opioid addiction services, and maybe putting together, uh, or addressing some of the state identified areas on putting together a, uh, uh, community group on this, and those can be ongoing discussions. Uh, later, or no, I'm sorry, the next day on the 11th, I virtually attended the Northwest Emergency Communication Board meeting. Uh, without dragging everybody into the weeds, we had a extended discussion on ECN encryption requirements. I think the only thing out of that, uh, you were really fortunate to be part of the Triple RDC, uh, our concerns in this have already been addressed and they're in place, uh, but a lot of places within the state, particularly in rural Minnesota, the incre- the new encryptions that are necessary for, uh, compliance are not necessarily available, and when they work with other agencies, they don't have the radios necessary. So there is a, uh, service that we put, that has been put together with forty portable radios, each of which has all talk groups for clear and encrypted, uh, law enforcement communication, twenty of them are, uh, State Patrol in Mankato and twenty at Brainerd, they're being maintained, there's a tra- a trailer that can be used for response areas that have specific needs, and even if you look at, uh, our area where we have a lot of access to the, this equipment, uh, I can recall times like the, the flood we had in '09, where we needed to get, uh, more communication equipment out, and they'd be able to respond with it, so that was a good, uh, good discussion, good resource to have. We also talked about, and I'll begin with, uh, Commissioner Kravenhoff, uh, we've got to get him, I, I've requested form to get him as a new alternate, but we are both going to have, if, if you can make it, in March and May, uh, Thief River Falls, there's gonna be an all-day training, because, quite frankly, anybody has sat through one of these meetings, and I was in law enforcement for forty years, um, when the technical people start talking, you get lost real quick, and they're gonna have a couple of trainings for us to try and give us an idea of what these people are talking about when we have a meeting with them. And they're calling it, uh, County Commissioner 101, they're not even disguising the fact that we're the ones that get lost in the weeds, and it's good that they're gonna have some training for us, but I'll get the details to Commissioner Kravenhoff, make sure he knows the dates. On the 12th, myself and the chair attended the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, um, meeting, Kurt Cannon talked about the PACT bonuses for post-911 Southwest, Southwest Asian and Vietnam vets, uh, anyone who thinks they may be eligible for those should contact the Veteran Service Officer here at Clay County. Veteran Service Officer Cannon will be, as always, very, uh, happy and competent in addressing, uh, if, what the eligibility requirements are and get people lined up for that. We did have a brief discussion about the high incidence of vets in our community who are coming into the Veterans Emergency Department with suicidal ideations and PTSD issues, uh, and that there are not adequate, um, facilities in all cases, uh, to refer them to inpatient or outpatient treatment, and this just reflects an issue that we keep seeing in our own community for people other than vets. Uh, that's an ongoing discussion, that's a priority with AMC's public safety and, uh, public health. This state just lacks mental health resources, and this area is particularly struck by that as far as mental health resources within the state of Minnesota, and not becoming dependent on North Dakota resources. So that is gonna be an ongoing discussion. On the 12th, later that day, I did attend the Red River Dispatch Center Authority Board Meeting, it was our first meeting, and having, uh, Commissioner Campbell and I have been through the entire process of getting this board set up, uh, he and Commissioner Wayland were, started it before I was on the board, and I was on the original Board of Authority, uh, for twelve years, and this has been a long haul, and just for the public's benefit, what this has done is it has put, it has left the operations decisions in the hands of the experts, the police chiefs, sheriffs, and fire chiefs, but it has put the financial responsibility in the hands of people who actually have the authority to pass a budget, and that'd be city council members, mayors, uh, and county commissioners. So I think this is a great step at keeping a great partnership going in the right direction, really happy to see this happen. And that concludes my report.
Paul?
Yes, as already, uh, mentioned, on the 10th, I joined Dave, uh, along for the, uh, discussion on the opioid funding. Um, on the 11th, I went to Ada for the Wild Rice, uh, watershed district meeting, uh, just a couple, uh, reasons I went in person is to reintroduce myself to the board, most of them I knew, actually, uh, but, uh, it was good to, uh, kind of see how they, uh, they work through their meetings, uh, a couple permits, uh, were talked about, and then one potential upcoming permit that'll, uh, be in the hitter-doll area, had some discussion. Uh, on the 12th, I went to the, uh, CLSWCD meeting as a commissioner, rather than a longstanding supervisor, uh, you know, they had their own offices, uh, you know, took care of those, uh, details that you do once a year, and, uh, I'll make quick mention of it because I'm very proud of that group, uh, attaining to, uh, uh, Board of Soil and Water Resources a grant on Snakey Creek, $400,000. That money hasn't been appropriated yet, but we'll be here, uh, within the coming months, and, um, I will keep this foretrest of, uh, the progress on that. Again, that's in MJ Johnson Park and a huge, um, grade stability, uh, project, and it'll, uh, again, uh, that's a competitive grant throughout the state, and, and $400,000 is significant, so, congratulations to them. Yesterday, I was, uh, I, uh, met with the Greater Fragumored Economic Development Corporation, had, uh, orientation for a couple hours with their executive director, Joe Russell. Interesting, uh, wow, wonderful overview, uh, they did a great job. Uh, I do look forward to, uh, continuing, um, conversations with them, what I, as a board member, can bring, rather than just listening to, uh, a whole bunch of general, uh, discussion about all the things they're doing, and that was, uh, one of the suggestions they had brought forward in the orientation. I'll be working along with, uh, Commissioner Ebinger, he's on the executive board, and I will be one of thirty-three board members, so it's a big group, and that concludes my report.
Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I attended a meeting at Lakes and Prairies Community Action, their Governance Committee meeting, in the process of updating the bylaws for the organization, particularly looked at, um, uh, some board structure components, it's been difficult for us to attain a quorum sometimes, so making sure that we're, uh, clear in what the bylaws are, um, asking for, and, uh, working through that component as well. I also attended the Soil and Water Conservation District, as Commissioner Kravenhoff, uh, alluded to, we did have the new supervisor swearing in, Jerry Buttonhoff will be serving in that capacity, dealt with, uh, general first-of-the-year items and board meeting dates. One item to note as well, they will continue to meet on the second Thursday of the month, they're changing the time of that from four o'clock until three o'clock, so that staff members do not need to, uh, stay so late in the day. They're continuing to work on the advertising for the district tech ag inspector position that has been open. that has been open for a while. They're having difficulties getting folks to apply for that. There is, it's a great place to work, so anybody interested in working in that area certainly reach out to the Soil and Water. That's a great position. Commissioner Kravenhoff did talk about the $400,000 grant. Wonderful to see the joint partnerships that go into applying for those grants. I think we've talked a little bit about the partnership with the Buffalo Red River Watershed District in implementation of the project. And we did have a 2023 ag BMP loan that was approved for a conservation tillage piece of equipment. Also a great opportunity for local residents to take advantage of that loan program. And I believe that did conclude my reports, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I had a meeting on Wednesday, or Thursday, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon, which Dave's read a report on. I was just going to mention that the Moorehead State, excuse me, Minnesota State University of Moorehead reported on post-911 service. There's money available for tuitions for veterans, so if there's some veterans going to want to go to college there, there, I mean, any college, there's money available for that. And we talked about the armory at Moorhead that's being worked on, and they're going through the same things that we have to, have to redo some of their contracts because the prices of services or construction products is going up. Also, I was also at the Wild Rice Watershed, or excuse me, I did Zoom on the Wild Rice Watershed Reboard. The only additional thing that I report there is that the Wild Rice Watershed Department or District, they have leasing out lands and they opened up the bits on them, and they received five bits and a little bit leasing on some of the land. Those are the only two. The other thing I want to mention on our programs for this coming, coming this week, on, if you look at that, one says Tuesday, January 20th, the Intergalactic Retreat, that is Friday on this coming week at 9:00. Okay. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for pointing that out. We're still working through our new system a little bit from a digital standpoint. So last Tuesday, I participated in a meeting with Derek LePointe from Downtown Moorehead Inc. and talked about a series of economic development issues, both within Clay County and with the Moorehead Center Mall area. On the 11th, we had county management. We heard updates from our STRIVE Committee, significant discussion on HR changes that impact our, our employees, and also some audit information needed. We are going to be starting our, starting our department updates for the board here within the next couple board, couple board meetings, so look forward to those. That afternoon, met with Justin Sorum on a, on a series of highway issues. Also, we met as a ribbon cutting committee for the Resource Recovery Facility. Again, that will, that's coming up next week. The, participated in the Board of Authority meeting that has already been, been addressed. On the 12th, met with Commissioner Kravenhoff with a series of his committee assignments. We worked through, worked through some of those. On the 13th, met with Mike Leiser from the Attorney's Office, Kathy McKay, Kent Severson, Matt Jacobson, and Justin Sorum on our nuisance issues and policies within Clay County, just kind of re, looking over our ordinance and also trying to better coordinate which, which department should take the lead when issues come forward. 13th, I also talked with Brian Melton on a series of, of county issues. Just to note, I think that we're starting now with the legislative session. We're starting to get up the update, email updates from AMC. MACA also has a, has a web meeting every Friday, and so we'll be able to get some additional information there. I would note, in addition to some of the important legislation that we've already talked to, talked about in regards to the waste management, there's some pretty significant things out there, such as paid family leave and that, how that would impact the county, also legalization of marijuana. And this board took some action earlier, this, actually towards the end of last year, about requesting legislation to allow commissioners to attend meetings virtually. They didn't have that encompassed fully, but right now, there's House File 198, which would have removed the state of emergency plus the 60 days to allow commissioners to attend up to three meetings per year if you have a family, either personal illness or a family illness, without having to post your, post your address. So that, that's a, that's a upcoming piece that will be looked at. And that concludes my report.
I just want clarification on the missing meetings. You say you can attend three of them virtually and then?
House file, this House file would allow you, if you were not feeling well, that you could attend the meeting virtually without having to post your address of where, where you would be.
Oh, okay. Excuse me. Very good.
Mr. Chair, we spent a little time talking this morning about this waste of energy, and just to show you how quickly things are flying here, this morning, before this morning's meeting, I had sent Chris McCon from Prairie Lake Solid Waste a couple of questions, and I asked about the, would the carbon emissions tax and is it still in this legislation? And if so, would we be subject to these taxes? And I just wanted to show that he just replied, and he says, after closer read, he believes this only applied to emissions from activities that, to generate electricity for the sale on the grid. So I just to point a clarification on that. So the tax that I was referring to, that could be from $5 to $240, it appears that it's restricted to those issues. So I, I just think it's important to, that's how quickly this is flying, and we're learning as we go. We're learning on the fly. But I, I reported that we could be subject to those, but apparently that's not the case.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Jack, you got any further instructions for us? Okay, thank you. We're adjourned.